Come forth and swear in our new board member Glenda Winert.
Where is she?
Come forth.
Do you have any family members you want to call up with?
You want me to put it up there? She's got, speak into the microphone.
Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. And repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Glenda Winert.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Glenda Winert.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education.
For Buncombe County.
For Buncombe County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
We've got our superintendent here, so we've got a staff, a pretty large staff that will be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask that we stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. I need a motion to approve this agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? In the action agenda, the first item is the resolution in support of prioritizing public schools and opposing unaccountable taxpayer-funded private school vouchers, and I will ask Dr. Jackson to speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, board members. This resolution comes before the board for your consideration. Resolution by the Buncombe County Board of Education in support of prioritizing public schools and opposing unaccountable taxpayer-funded private school vouchers. Whereas, North Carolina's public schools are vital components of our communities, providing transformative education, fostering opportunity, and contributing to economic prosperity. And whereas, eighty-four percent of North Carolina's school-aged children and seventy-five point seven percent of school-aged children in Buncombe County attend public schools, reflecting high levels of parental satisfaction and confidence in the quality of education provided. And whereas, it is imperative to continue investing in public schools to uphold their critical role as pillars of community cohesion and economic prosperity. And whereas, North Carolina's public schools are governed by our local communities, and it's imperative that local teachers and local leaders advocate for our public schools and the successes and challenges they face in providing a sound basic education for all students. And whereas, North Carolina's public schools have achieved significant milestones, including record-high graduation rates, increased workforce credentials earned by students, and national recognition for educators. And whereas, despite these accomplishments, North Carolina faces challenges such as inadequate funding for public education, ranking near the bottom nationally in K-12 funding, and lagging behind our neighboring states in teacher compensation. And whereas, diverting taxpayer funds towards unaccountable taxpayer-funded private school vouchers undermines the integrity and effectiveness of North Carolina's public education system. And whereas, private schools receiving public money through vouchers lack accountability measures such as reporting how students perform, what is being taught, and whether they employ licensed teachers. And whereas, the diversion of public funds to private schools through taxpayer-funded vouchers poses a significant financial threat to public schools, potentially depriving them of essential resources and compromising the quality of education for all students. And whereas, in the first year of taxpayer-funded private school voucher expansion, our state's public schools could lose more than $200 million in state funding, and Buncombe County could lose $5,573,040 or three percent in state funding, with hundreds of millions lost in coming years. And whereas, instead of funding private school vouchers, resources should be allocated towards expanding access to pre-kindergarten and quality childcare, increasing teacher salaries, providing necessary school supplies, enhancing educational facilities, and ensuring equitable opportunities for students with disabilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Buncombe County Schools Board of Education hereby urge the North Carolina General Assembly to prioritize public schools by number one, substantially increasing teacher salaries in order to pay teachers as the professionals they are and to attract and retain qualified educators. And number two, allocating significant funding towards early childhood education, quality childcare, and pre-kindergarten programs to ensure all children have access to a strong educational foundation. And number three, placing a moratorium on taxpayer-funded private school vouchers until public schools are fully funded, ensuring taxpayer resources are invested in accountable and regulated public education institutions adopted by the Buncombe County Schools Board of Education this twenty-seventh day of June 2024.
I need a motion to approve the resolution.
I will proudly say I would like to approve that.
Okay, so you have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, all those in favor?
Can I have a quick question about something regarding this issue?
Sure.
And Dr. Jackson, forgive me for putting you in the spot on this, but as I read the legislation, what was, what I picked up on was this is, there's some confusion, I think, in the community. Right on time. Excuse me. That taxpa, that a private school voucher program functions where the money follows the student. So it's about school choice, and so like if you have a, your child right now is in public, a public school, and they want to go to a private school and take advantage of these vouchers, that the money follows the students, which is, it is true. And that's one way that we, as a public school system, would be losing funding because our ADM, our ADM decreases. That's one way that we lose funding, is by that student leaving. But the other way, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this legislation actually is problematic, is it sets up a fund first. This isn't, so this isn't like a, you know, rolling issue where it's just the money follows the student. From our taxpayer dollars in our general fund, which there's a fund balance at the state level, they are directing those dollars to create, as I understand it, a $500 million private school voucher fund that will be established. So instead of directing taxpayer funds to public schools, they're going to set up a $500 million voucher fund first, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
So it's actually, from a financial perspective, it impacts public schools in both ways. One, that $500 million could go to support public school districts across our state. And then secondly, as families, if they choose to ta, you know, take advantage of this voucher program, then they start to leverage, you know, tap into that $500 million fund, and then we lose the ADM and thereby lose the dollars per student.
Absolutely, and to that point, one of the things that stands out to me is that our performance as a school system, as forty-five individual schools, as teachers and classrooms, is very well-measured, very well-publicized. So parents have transparent opportunities to see just exactly how well we're doing, where our opportunities for improvement are, and where our successes are. Private schools do not have that same requirement for accountability. And so, we wind up with funding that historically has funded our public schools where taxpayers knew exactly the return on investment, exactly what they were getting for their dollars, going to places where we don't know what's being taught to this resolution's point. We don't know how successful or not successful those institutions are. And we also don't know the qualifications of the educators who are providing that education. And so, beyond the loss of funding to the public schools, there's a loss, in my mind, of transparency for parents and for taxpayers to understand how those dollars are being spent and what the return on investment is. And so I think that both of those things are true, that there's a loss of funding to public schools, but there's also a loss of transparency to taxpayers in terms of how their dollars that are being spent on education are translating into student success metrics.
Lastly, one other question. I understand that there used to be a, like a household income cap in place for this program if you were, as a family, wanted to take advantage of it. And my understanding is that the law has now removed that cap. So it's accessible for families of any income. You could be a millionaire or billionaire, and effectively get access to some of these funds. And is it correct to say that those requirements in the law, even though it does remove the cap, it is graduated, right? So, so lower household income citizens have access to a larger percent of our student allotment? Whereas, higher-income households have less somehow, but it's still, they get still utilized?
That's my understanding, Mr. Elliott, but certainly that would be something I would want to do some research on to make sure that we're speaking accurately, but that is my understanding, yes, sir.
Yeah, so it's more or less a discount, for a wealthy family, anyway. It's just more or less a discount for their student who may already be attending. Because this qualifies for that too, right?
That's exactly right.
The $500 million fund doesn't just pay for public school students who are redirected to private schools, it's for students and families that could already be in private schools.
Yes, sir.
And they just apply and get more or less a check back from the state to get a discount on their private school tuition.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for board members? Okay, I have, all those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on the action agenda is the interim budget resolution for twenty-three, twenty-four. It's a walk-in document, I believe Ms. Thorpe has given that to us in the early hours of the night. What did I say? Thank you.
I have provided the interim budget resolution, and this composed of, we took a budget that we brought to you in May based on the best-known components that we have at this time for state, federal, and local. And it's divided in six months so that we could have a continuation budget to be able to operate through November if needed. Of course, if the state budget passes, it usually takes a month for the state to give us the allotments and us actually bring an actual budget to you all. So, but if that happens, we will be bringing a actual budget before November, hopefully. So, in this budget, we have put in place saving strategies in order to meet and be able to balance the budget coming November thirtieth of 2024. Do you all have any questions regarding it?
This is a monumental task. And we certainly appreciate the dedication of you, your dedication and the dedication of your department to get this done so that we can address the letter of the law. Yeah, any board members have?
Just to echo what you just said, Ms. Thorpe and her team are so valuable to all of us, to the people we serve, to our school system. So I want to recognize her and her team for working endless hours to try to make this work the best that we can under the circumstances. So, thank you, Ms. Thorpe and your team for what you do for us. It's a tough job, and I'm, coming from the banking world, you're awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's my team, and I brought my budget team in here, so they are hardworking.
Okay, so, that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve the interim budget resolution as presented. So, thank you. And I think that was a second as well, yes, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Budget amendment number seven is also a walk-in document Ms. Thorpe has provided us. And are there questions for her on this amendment? Hearing, none.
Can we, yeah, can we clarify that? Okay, sorry. I got it now, found it.
All right, thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve budget amendment number, I don't know what it is. Seven, thank you.
Yes, so moved.
And is that a second, Judy? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is monumental, this is a world book encyclopedia, if you want to know.
Madam Chair, can I ask Ms. Thorpe just one question?
You may.
Certainly.
Thank you so much. Just to clarify, it's a six-month interim budget, and we're doing that because we're really having to work hard on balancing the budget based on the dollars that we have.
We usually do an interim budget every year because we never have the state budget in time. And the law now allows, many years ago, they put in place, because they didn't meet their deadline to get it to us by July one. They put in place where we can take an interim budget to our board until that state budget passes. Now, there is a component of this that we are working through because if you'll remember, we had, we asked the county commissioners for thirteen point four million dollars that would address our current staffing and our current expenditures based on the budget numbers, the best budget numbers that we can come up with at this time. And within that, we have come up with saving strategies that we have to work towards in order to get to a balanced budget in November.
That's right, okay.
Does that answer that question?
It does, and I think it's important for the public to understand that as well, and we certainly appreciate that. I very much appreciate the county commissioners. Dr. Jackson was comparing what we got from them four years ago to now, and it's a huge number. I think it was over $20 million, right, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for pointing that out. Since 2021, 2022, the commissioners have increased our local budget $25.8 million annually. And so we very much appreciate their investment in our school system.
So, this is my comment, that our local folks are doing what they can for us. It really is about, at the state level, not being able to have their funding, their approved allotments, and all of those things is very, very challenging. And so, I want the public to understand, the parents and taxpayers, that, you know, it is at the state level. And, you know, I'm not happy with what we have right now at the state level. And I just hope people will remember that this fall because it's definitely hurting public education. And if, most of us were, grew up in public education, and I think we owe it to our kids to do what's right and to our employees to do what's right. So thank you for the clarification, and again, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And your team.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I have one second to you, please?
Of course.
To that point, Ms. Fleming's also, I was doing some research that, around our local, the size and magnitude of our local supplement. And what I found was, it was at least true a couple of years ago, is that Buncombe County has the third-highest local supplement in the state. We're the fourteenth-largest school system in the state of North Carolina, but we have the third-largest local supplement in the state. So we rank behind Wake County, I think is number one, Charlotte-Nexonburg is number two. And then of all the other big metropolitan areas in the state of North Carolina, Buncombe County is ranked third in the level of local supplement dollars. So yes, we are right to definitely express some gratitude towards the citizens of Buncombe County, the taxpayers that, you know, are funding those local supplement dollars, and for the county commissioners to recognize how our public education system supports our communities in that way with, by being ranked the third-largest supplement in the state, I think it says a lot. And thank you, Gavin.
And one more comment to that is very crucial, which is very important. They do classified and certified in Buncombe County in these larger districts. Not, most of them do not do classified as a local supplement, and I want to give kudos to Buncombe County Government and for us doing that because it's very, very much needed and appreciated. Appreciate it.
Good point, thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along to the consent agenda, I have the minutes from June sixth, regular meeting, open session. Thank you, Ms. Thorpe. The personnel report, the school nutrition budget amendment, award of a contract for liability, property, auto, and workers' compensation insurance. It's also a walk-in document. WD Williams Elementary School approved stormwater management. North Buncombe Middle School approved stormwater management. And Elementary and Secondary Education Act Statement of Assurances. Policies for second reading, policy seventeen sixty, seventy-two eighty, prohibition against retaliation. Policy thirty-six twenty, extracurricular activities and student organizations. Policy forty twenty-three, education for pregnant and parent students. Policy forty forty and seventy-three ten, staff and student relations. Policy forty-one forty, foreign exchange students. Policy seventy-one thirty, licensure. Policies eighty-three forty, insurance. Policy eighty-five ten, school finance officer. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? In the information agenda, we have financial reports, which was a walk-in document. Policies for first reading. Policies for first reading. Policy 3400, evaluation of student progress. Policy 3410, testing and assessment program. Policy 4400, attendance. Our next meeting will be August 4. Our work session and close session will begin at 4:00, and open session will begin at 5:30 p.m. in the minitorium here. I need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any opposed? I should say all in favor. Sorry. Thank you, all in favor.
Aye.
Hope you all have a nice summer.